Good afternoon and welcome to the Town of Blackwood Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, September the twenty-second, year twenty twenty-five. The time is six P M. Ms. Durst, would you please call the roll, ma'am?
Councilwoman Page.
Here.
Councilwoman Brock. Councilwoman Frith. Councilwoman Kendrick.
Here.
Mayor Griffin.
Here, thank you, ma'am. Was the meeting and agenda posted according to state law?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. At this moment, I'll be looking for an approval to approve the agenda as presented. Motion being made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, thank you. At this time, would you please join Councilwoman Page in the pledge of allegiance in the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just give thanks for this day, give thanks for all that you do for us each and every day. May we have a very meaningful and fast, quick, productive meeting this evening in all that you do. Amen.
Councilwoman Page, thank you for that. Amen. At this, at this time, we will pause for council member remarks. I'll start to my left, if any, I'll pause. None, thank you. I'll go to my right, if any, and I'll pause.
I do. I am so thankful for our new halfway, still improving roundabout. Very nice, I've only seen like maybe almost one car wreck, but yeah, I mean, I feel like it's working. So, I'm very much appreciative of all those that have been working on it in this hot, humid heat, as well as, you know, out there in the sun and everything, so, thanks.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And speaking of the roundabout, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, thank you, sir. Speaking of the roundabout, there's a very nice citizen that sent an email to me with a video, a helpful video about how to navigate the roundabout. And I'm gonna, before we post that on our website, I'm gonna make sure that D O T sees it and all those folks to make sure we just ain't posting something that we shouldn't. But if it's approved, it's a very nice and educational video on roundabouts. I have no other further remarks. Next on the agenda, Town Administrator Report, Mr. Driggers.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council. Couple of things to bring you up to speed on, not much in the report tonight. But I do wanna let you know that from our conversation at your last meeting, that your budget for the fiscal year, your check registers at that time for July, and our monthly budget to actual reports were all posted to our website, so those are all there. And, and, and I, my belief is that they're very easy to find. And so, members of the public should have no difficulty locating any of that information. So now that we're moving into August, that month, they will start to have a little more of a cumulative effect. And so, I wanted to share with you that as of the end of August, we have revenue of four hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, and expenses of two hundred and six thousand four seventy-one. I didn't do the math there real quick, but it's three, four, eight, thirty, sixteen, thirteen, two, two hundred and, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar-ish to, to the good. So again, revenue over expenditures, four seventy-three eighteen, to expenses of two oh six four seventy-one. What we're working on right now, what we're working on right now is making sure that the, that the budget reports that we are presenting are indeed showing monthly activity as well as year-to-date activity. And so, in the, in the QuickBooks programming, which again, I think I've said before, it's not a, it's not a bookkeeping system that I've ever used before, so I'm learning about it as we move forward. But it's not easily giving me a report that shows me both of those in a single report, the month and then year-to-date, and that's really what I'm looking for. But right now, we're having to do that in two different reports. And so, I can, I can run a monthly budget to actual, and I can run a separate year-to-date actual. And until we can figure out if that can be done otherwise, and I would think that it could be, but we, we will produce both of those reports. And, and so, that way, we're clearly demonstrating how, what our activity was for the month. There'll be a check register of everything that is the itemization of what's in that report, and then, of course, we'll have a year-to-date. So where we're sitting right now with, you know, two months in year-to-date, July and August, it isn't really, it, it, it's not creating a problem, it's pretty easy to see. But as we move into year, I mean, to month five, six, seven, eight, nine, what we wanna make sure is that we're being able to monitor that year-to-date as a percentage of the year, so that we know where we, where we are. Revenue, most of our revenue, the highest amount of our revenue comes in at the end of the year. So we're typically seeing those revenues come in in May and June. Some of those come in in July, and we accrue them back. And so, we, we just wanna make sure that, that we don't look at something and, and feel alarmed by it. We wanna make sure that we understand what we're looking at. And so, that, that is a work in progress, we're continuing to do that, but was very pleased with this. So after tonight, we will, we'll make sure those reports are in your, printed reports are in your hand as well, as well as we will be posting those August reports to our website after tonight's meeting as well. So if there's any questions about our budget reports, I'm glad to answer those and, now we're in the future. And the only other thing that I really have to, to talk with Council about before we get to some of the items in the agenda, just as a reminder, each of you should have received an invitation for the EdVenture Legislative Luncheon. That's being held on October twenty-second in Columbia. Those invitations went to you individually, and so, I simply ask that if you, if you intend to go over, if you can give them the R S V P that they're asking for, it'll help them plan for that accordingly. But that's all elected officials in Richland County are invited, as well as county officials, all municipal officials to, to that event. So just wanted to remind you of that on October the twenty-second. Totally available for any questions you may have this evening, otherwise, I'll have additional comments with agenda items as we move forward.
Thank you, sir. Council, any comments for our administrator?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Driggers, thank you for that. I wanted to add one point, that the F Y twenty-five, twenty-six budget now is online and on our website, so thank you for that. And my, my question for you is, I'm looking at the town's website, and it shows check register. Are we going to backfill prior years of checks and post them online?
It was not my intent to do that, but it certainly can be done.
I think we should. For as far back...
Well, I don't, I don't know that you've ever produced check registers.
No, we've been in violation of state law for a very long time.
Yeah, and, and, and so, our financial records that we keep in the office are gonna be for three years. We archive those for seven years, and anything before that would be no longer.
Well, I think that it, and I don't, if there's any objection up here from a council, please speak up. But I think that if you've got three years' worth of data in Town Hall, then let's get three years' worth of data on the website so that the public can see it.
We will do that. If, if, if it's permissible, and if it's okay with Council, we will, we will continue to work on that and backload that as time allows us to do that. We'll make it a priority, but I, I can't commit that we'll have all of that done, you know, in two weeks, two months. I mean, but we will start backfilling from the most current month and work our way back. Very good.
Thank you, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple?
Councilman McKendrick.
These are just, Ed, some calls from constituents. Were we as a town aware that R C R C was gonna start charging for the pickleball courts? I mean, do we know that going in, and is there anything we can do about that? I think they did thirty days, residents could use them for free, which, and when I went by there, they were always, they were pretty heavily used, especially in the evening hours, and now there's a charge to use those?
I have no knowledge of that, but I'm glad to investigate.
All right, if you can, that'd be great. Second, there's also a Richland County item, if you could investigate. Three calls, it's amazing, I've served on council for almost four years, and no one has called me about recycling. But I did get three calls asking, is it possible for Richland County to pick up recycling on a weekly basis versus every other week? Because people end up throwing their recycling in the trash because the recycle bin is full. I said I would bring both those up, I've done that.
I'll be glad to inquire.
Do we have, I asked this question last month, do you know if we have an idea now of what we are collecting from our third-party business license agreement?
The amount? Yeah, I mean, the, the financial report for us... On business license, correct?
Primarily from the third-party giving us...
Oh, yeah, we can, yeah, we can certainly break that down. So our financial report's gonna show us total revenue?
Can you, we get that for next month?
We can certainly get that for you, absolutely.
And we can set up a time, I've worked in QuickBooks for fifteen years, the report you're after is in there. We can set up some ti- a time, and I can show you how to access it.
Excellent, that would be great.
You can select your columns and your data, I'll show you, I'll, I'll stop by now.
Wonderful. You can show me, but I really would love to...
Okay, thank you.
That way, we don't lose anything in the translation.
Any further questions? Mr. Driggers, just one, I believe, Councilman McKendrick, if I'm not mistaken, I think that might be your second or third time inquiring about that type of report. When we get that figured out with the budget reports, how we used to get them, I know you're working on that new look forward. Let's go ahead and integrate that into it. And then, to Mayor Protem's point on the checks, we haven't, but we know we have to. So, moving forward, we just have to make sure staff, how we divvy up those duties with staff there. We just got caught up on the...
It's actually very easy to do, I mean, it, it's a very easy process for us. And then, we, and it's a digital report, and we just, we send it over, and Jordan posts it to the financial pages. Yeah, it's just that we have not done it, but the process of doing it is not difficult.
No. Thank you, sir. All right, Council, before you, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes for Town Council Regular Meeting, August twenty-fifth, and the Special Call Meeting on September the eighth. Be looking for a motion to approve those two items in the minutes.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Thank you, sir, motion made, motion seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any ayes, ayes have it, thank you. Give a second, but I'll read this as Ms. Durst is approaching, sorry, Jordan. Public comment for this afternoon, this portion of the meeting is designated for public comments as provided by the municipal ordinance. Public comments must be limited to the items on the agenda. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to address counsel. All comments will be entered into the official record, and no action will be taken during the hearing itself. No one, thank you, ma'am. Always pause for anyone that wish to speak on any item that's on this agenda today. Sir, sir, if you don't mind, would you please approach the podium, give us your name, and you'll probably have to hold the button up there?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, good evening, Council, how are you?
Thank you.
Good, my name is Patrick Broza, resident of Blackwood. Just had a comment in regards to the call, call to order on the agenda. I know that the information for this meeting was released publicly and scheduled as necessary based off of the Freedom of Information Act. Can I just request in the future that the Council de-conflict that with other pressing matters in the area, especially with a lot of the construction meetings and Richland County meetings that we have going on? As you know, there is a lot of development in this area. I know that is a priority for a lot of our residents who cannot be here tonight to attend, so that is my one request.
Yes, sir, appreciate you, and we were made aware that through social media, ourself, I will...
I'm sure you are.
Our meetings, just so that you know and the public know, we vote on our mass meetings for the year. But what we will do, I wasn't in the office when I seen that this, today, but we will make sure that our social media and marketing side of the house reaches out to the communication side of Richland County, so that we can do a little bit better in coordinating both of us. So that it is, if it is something very pressing to the community, I'll have to come to this body to ask them to move meetings and things like that if we see fit to that. But we were made aware of that, and if we wasn't here tonight, I would definitely be at Blackwood Middle for that.
As I'm sure most of us would be, but thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that wish to speak? All right, thank you, we'll close, public comment, Ms. Durst is six, seventeen. Next item on the agenda is presentation, item A, one, one item this evening, B, U-Haul, presentation by Mr. Steve from U-Haul, thank you.
Good evening. We're here this evening to discuss rezoning the property on Community Drive at Blackwood Road. We've owned this property for about twelve years now, and we would like to expand into the Blackwood area and construct a new facility. And I've got a few slides here to show you what we're looking at. So, outline of the property that is surrounded by the exit ramp on seventy-seven and Community Drive and Blackwood Road. This is a preliminary drawing of what we have in mind for the facility. Of course, this is turned left to right as opposed to north-south, but we are putting the facility at the south side of the property and so that we can increase our visibility from the interstate and to decrease our visibility from Blackwood Road and the Cobblestone Community and such. This is just kind of a quick overview of both of those slides combined to give you an idea of where it is aligned with the property. As you can see, it is on the south side of the property. Now, when we discussed with the Planning Commission, and I know that was a point of Mr. McKendrick, in the past, there had been questions posed about partialing the property, why do we need to have the whole thing changed? And the simple fact is, is we do not need to have the whole thing changed. We are willing to concede to dividing the property, leaving the northern part of it as town center, and simply changing the southern part that we're going to be using, and, and selling the northern part of it off. And also, as you can see, there's sufficient divide to reduce the visibility that I know was a concern of residents on the, from the north side of the road. Artist rendering of what the facility would look like coming north on seventy-seven. And this is the view that would be from Community Drive. And an example here of a facility that we just recently completed in the Myrtle Beach area, so that you have a real-life reference point of what it is that we intend to construct. Obviously, in conjunction with Mr. Wilson and the Building Department. And it wouldn't be exactly this, but the general overview is, would be, would be very similar. And it is, it is a two-building, the second part is a warehouse that we use for storing our shipping containers, referred to as U-boxes. So that is a warehouse facility. There had been concern in the past about traffic, and I do believe that the town itself has resolved this issue by widening Blackwood Road, by widening of Community Drive, and adding the exit ramp to the south, thereby alleviating a lot of the traffic issues that people were concerned about there being. You know, as you can see, we average roughly thirty-one visits during a weekday, and roughly fifty-three visits during a weekend. And we're open from, from us, seven to seven, twelve hours on the norm. So we're talking on a weekday, two and a half vehicles per hour of impact to the traffic, and on weekends, just over four. Another point of concern for many people is our security. People often have the misconception of theft issues and things of that nature. We have very, very tight security at our locations. State-of-the-art, twenty-four-hour monitored systems, motion detectors, lit. We have a hands-free intercom system throughout the building. If there's any concerns, with cameras on them, that is monitored. It is monitored at the facility, and after hours, it is monitored by corporate alarm department. The cameras are day and night, high, high resolution. We have twenty, twenty-four-hour controlled access. You don't get in unless you have a card, and you turn off your individual alarm, and then, at another station, you turn off the, you open the door. So you have two points that you have to access with your card to even get into the facility and disable your, your unit. It doesn't just turn it off for everybody, it only turns off your unit. And then, as you leave, you rearm it, your unit is rearmed. And if you forget, it does reset after a short period of time. We do keep our facilities well-lit to avoid having people... We do keep our facilities well-lit to avoid having people lording around. And that's it for the slideshow presentation. I do want to point out a couple of side issues that, you know, we like to be, to like to be good neighbors and a good part of the community. We support military. We support local law enforcement and first responders. We are often considered first responders when there's a natural disaster, flood, fire, hurricane, tornadoes. We are frequently a staging point when there is disasters, so that there's a central point of stockpiling goods for the community and things of that nature. We offer free storage to people that are impacted. We, we do everything we possibly can to support the community that we are a part of. We hire local. We promote from within. So we are community-based and frequently will help out causes in the community to maintain that status. But I really feel that working together, that we can make this project work for both U-Haul and for the community. We are certainly willing to discuss things such as the dividing the property. You know, that way, the front part of it stays as the town center status and can have the businesses on the Blathwood Road that the town would like to see there. So we are certainly willing to, to work with, with you in any way that we can to make this a viable project. You know, the community, for good or for bad, is growing, and we offer a product that, quite frankly, the community will be in need of. We'll be offering in the neighborhood of eight hundred and forty storage units, and, quite frankly, I don't believe that that's going to take away from any of our current competitors and still provide a product that is needed. One other small point that I recall was traffic impact. People were concerned about the traffic on Blathwood Road and things of that nature. But that point, I really don't feel is, is a big issue because if somebody is moving that is on Mueller or on down the road, they're still going to be getting a truck, and they're still going to be driving down Blathwood Road. It's just a matter of where they picked it up from, but they're still going to be traveling the same area. And the volume is not going to be of a large, not such a large number that it's, it's going to impact the traffic. That is what I offer for your consideration. I thank you for your time. If there's any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of counsel from the presentation?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Proton.
Mr. Strong.
Sir.
I don't remember when it was, but it was in the last five years that another gentleman approached this council with the same request.
Yes.
It was voted down four to one. I was the lone yea vote.
Yes, sir.
What has changed from then until now?
Well, the, the biggest thing that has changed is, aside from the local things that have happened locally with the addition of SCOUT and that stuff, but as far as on our side, one of the biggest sticking point was, why did we need the whole property changed over? And we are going to split the property and sell off the top part so that it can remain as TC.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from counsel? Hearing none. Just one question. How many acres is needed that you're looking at keeping for the actual site?
We have to get, we have to get a civil engineer involved, and we are looking at, in the right about ten acres is what we are anticipating.
The seven, is it seventeen or eighteen?
Eighteen.
Okay.
But until we actually have the civil engineer lay it out specifically, I can't give you an exact number, but it's going to be very close to that. And I, last thing I would like to mention is that I am a owner's representative for the U-Haul Company slash construction project manager. I will be the person overseeing this being built, so that I, there is local person working on this directly.
Thank you, sir. Stick, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I have questions, but I'm assuming you'll be here.
Yes, I was just about to ask him to stick around.
Because we'll get to this in new business. I think my questions are quite more appropriate there.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is boards and committee updates. We'll start with item A, Daco Meadows Park Foundation, Councilwoman Page.
Neverport.
Thank you, ma'am. Will come to myself. Item B, Central Midlands Council Government. We are fortunate in this year's run to have Representative McDaniel as the board chair, someone that's local, that's a huge advocate of rural roads and making sure that things get, get done. And she has a pretty good record of that over on Fairfield, and we now have the privilege of having her represent parts of Blathwood now in the redistricting. With her move, I did receive two appointments. One appointment is the vice chair of the Urban Transportation Committee, and then the second one is to the executive board. So that is one star plus that we now have a real good say-so in a lot of these projects moving forward, in addition to my colleague to my left, Councilwoman McKendrick, I'm the penny-tad. So my words to the committee was, we got a lot of roads up here in Blathwood, and we need to find some money, so let's get to it. And that first meeting is this Thursday. So looking forward to that, looking forward to representing Blathwood and getting something done. That ends my report. Next item is, item C, Richland County Transportation Penny Advisory Committee, T-PAC, Councilman McKendrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is still, obviously, movement and construction on the traffic circle, which people see actually was commented on by Ms. Page, Councilwoman Page. I've got two calls concerning T-PAC in the last month, and both were related to an SCDOT project. I do think it's important for our Blathwood residents, those who are watching, whether it's on Facebook or if we come across them, the Community Road Project, the I-77 Project, our SCDOT, the exiting in the railroad bridge off of Wilson is SCDOT. The only projects that are involved with the penny right now are the widening of Blathwood Road from the interstate down to Syrup Mill and the traffic circle. We have not started anything on McNulty yet. We haven't started anything on Creech yet. Those are funded projects which have not been started. So in the public's eye, for those of you with influence, certainly on council or our staff, it's hard to, somebody that brings you a concern because you serve on T-PAC, it's hard to not hear them out. I've called SCDOT and shared some concerns, but what T-PAC has going on and what SCDOT has going on are layered right on top of each other, which inconvenience our everyday lives. Whether you're dropping a student off at middle school, high school, whether you're trying to get to work, whether you're trying to come to a council meeting, it's an inconvenience, and these projects are overlapped and intertwined. But as far as T-PAC's projects go, we're making progress, and you see it. And it's, it's going to change the stage they're in right now. It's going to change pretty rapidly, pretty quick. Traffic patterns will continue to develop around the traffic circle, which, you know, you've already seen, you'll continue to see. So you'll also see workers working out there at night, which I think the mayor and the administrator were, were key on having done. So that will continue. But, Mr. Mayor, if we can try to keep our residents focused on where to use their voice, I, I think it's, I think it'll be helpful. But that's my T-PAC report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And let's do the residents a favor. Let's tad team on those SCDOT questions, because we do have the full executive staff in our meetings so that we can get those answered. So if you send it to me, I'll send you those replies back on Thursday.
Right.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, old business, item A, report from Richland County voter registration, official results from the special election.
Mr. Mayor, attached to your agenda package is that official certified report from the Election Commission, and I offer to you that report to be accepted into the records of the town, please.
Thank you, sir. Does that re, that requires a vote, right?
I think it would be appropriate.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion made to approve. Any second? Second made. Any discussion? Hearing none. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, new business. Three items, I'm sorry. First item on the agenda, item A, discussion and approval of internet and fiber optic replacement. Mr. Driggers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, this is information that I presented to you about a month ago, and there have been no changes to the proposal as presented. No new information really to report, other than as a reminder, this is for the replacement of fiber cable that we have that runs from Town Hall here to the manor. It is, it's, we believe that it's necessary for the long-term maintenance of that system, and we, we had some serious concerns that we are near, we, we are, we're near a failure of that current system, simply because it is not sized appropriately for the amount of data and the bandwidth that we have coming through. So you'll, you'll see that the proposal is fifteen thousand four thirty-three forty-four. As I commented in my, my original comments on this, I am requesting that you consider a fifteen thousand dollar allocation from the contingency line item to the repairs and maintenance for the manor of fifteen thousand, in case we have some, some cost overruns or unexpected work that we may have to do in relation.
Mr. Driggers, that is not, that's not the amount that matches the invoice in our packet.
I just think he misspoke. Read your invoice amount.
Twelve thousand four thirty-three.
Yeah, you said fifteen.
Okay.
You said, you said fifteen four thirty-three.
Four.
But you're requesting fifteen even.
Yes. I'm requesting fifteen for any potential cost overruns that we could have in a change order on that. And I'm asking that that be a consideration from contingency to the repair and maintenance line item.
Mr. Driggers.
Yes, sir.
Does this upgrade remedy the potential pitfall that we're currently facing? And if so, for how long?
Well, you know, I can't predict the future on bandwidth and what technology will do going forward, but we are, we're, we would be multiplying our bandwidth by six hundred percent.
Are we at capacity now?
Well, we're over capacity. That's the, that's the issue. For, for the lines that we have, we are currently over capacity. We can't add the additional cameras that we've installed in the park until we do this. We are already over capacity.
Yes, sir.
Quick question. We talked a little bit after the meeting last month. Is this an overlay or a repull? Do you know?
A repull. We're going to remove the old line and install new line with some updates to, to that as well. We're enlarging some of the boxes and that type of thing.
And this is, this is a question that I hit when I read through the packet. Are, are we not tact exempt?
No.
I've asked that before, Nat.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the internet and fiber optic replacement request to, for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir. Motion made to approve the fifteen thousand allocation to not exceed the fifteen thousand allocation. And the second made, Councilwoman Page. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the only discussion I would have is, and it would probably be helpful for those watching, for you to recap why we only have one quote.
Well, under our, our purchasing requirements, our procurement policy, technology is exempted in our purchasing policy, and that is not unique to us here in Blathwood in any regard. I, you, you see that exemption. I've seen it in any city that I have ever served. It's a pretty standard exemption.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and approval of shred event. Mr. Driggers.
Yes, sir. We, we, we had a shred event back on September the fourth. That event was, was billed to us at the amount of the invoice that you have on hand, one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. I was asking council's consideration for a one thousand six hundred dollar appropriation to the town events line item to, to be able to pay for this event, because it was not provided for in our current budget under our schedule of events.
Mr. Driggers.
If this appropriation was not provided for in the current fiscal year, how did it happen?
This event was conducted at the request of the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, same question.
Yep. We had already pre-done this stuff before budget time. Do we have stats on that event?
We had approximately a hundred participants that came through. I, I think that's, I think that's the only stat that we have. You know, one of the, one of the things that I question is, do, you know, do we know of those number of folks that, who are in-town residents versus out-of-town residents? And, and we do not know that.
Mr. Mayor, when did we discuss this?
I don't recall, sir.
Okay.
But this was not in our twenty-five, twenty-six budget?
No, sir. It was not. The, the events, and we've got another line item to talk about that. The events that were in your budget workshops were movies in the park, Christmas tree lighting, the red, white, blue event, Juneteenth, Veterans Day, Purple Heart, Christmas Parade, and there were two proposed new events, the MLK luncheon and Jazz on the Loading Dock event. And so those were the items that- And so those were the items that were identified during the budget workshops.
But you said we knew about, but this was already planned?
No, ma'am, I didn't say that.
Mr. Driggers, where were you when this event occurred?
Oh, I was, I was here on the day of the event.
Where were you when this event was being set up?
As we were looking for the appropriation of where to pay for this from, I was away on vacation.
Okay.
But I communicated with our staff by email, but I was not here physically.
So I was, I was asking, so this was something that was already in the works, but we just didn't know about it? Mr. Mayor or Mr. Driggers?
So these are things that were put onto our community action list at the first of the year when I sat down with Jordan and the plan events for the year. And we booked that time to conduct that community event.
But we didn't know about it.
You mean coun-
Council, I'm sorry.
You got, well, I, I think you got a two-fold question. I think it was sent out to everybody, the event. I had to look at emails to see when that was sent out, to give you all the heads up on an event coming up.
Well, I just searched my emails for, I just searched my emails for thread three sixty and it says we didn't find anything.
Now, we may have gotten the notification that it was happening. I'm just saying, if we had to pay for it and the funds were not allocated, I would have, I would think that we would have known that before the event took place. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
If we had to pay for it, I would think that we would know, or it was booked and scheduled without there being funds to pay for it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I guess my question was, did we know when we did this event that it was not in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget?
When the budget came out and when this event came around on the calendar, as Mr. Driggers said, we were looking to see where it can fit into the budget.
But because it wasn't budgeted, that's my question, are, are we being asked to pay for something that couldn't be stopped? Are we being asked to pay for something? Just because somebody's spending money and not asking council? And now we're again looking at paying for something after the fact?
Councilmember, if, if I can interject, under ordinance, you, you task the town administrator with overseeing and managing the budget.
Yes, sir.
And when it was, when the invoice was received, I did not have a line item in the budget to pay for that invoice from. And it was very clear from council during the budget workshops that, that if we were to consider anything, that council needed to consider that because it would come from potentially contingency, which is what we did just a few moments ago. And this is clearly a town event. And so the only place that I have to pull town event dollars from, whatever I just gave you.
Community event?
It is community event, it's, it's, it's town events. We have eighty-five thousand dollars currently in that account, twenty-five, five, one, one, zero, three, seven, three. That's-
So, so who gets shortchanged? Because you see where, I hope you see where I'm going with my question. Because what we approved in community events is spent in community events.
You, you don't have enough money in community events and that's another agenda item for this evening.
We certainly don't.
And so, yes, for, for me to appropriate sixteen hundred dollars to a community event, I have to take those dollars from somewhere else. This budget is so tight, if I charged it to that line item, you needed to, you're going to have to give me direction on what I take sixteen hundred out of.
Let's back up a second, Mr. Driggers, do we actually have eighty-five thousand dollars in that, in that bucket? Because I'm under the impression that we actually suspended it down to zero.
I, I believe, I believe we suspended it to zero, but we have a plan to spend eighty-five.
No, the, the budget that you approved, the budget ordinance you approved had an eighty-five thousand dollar expenditure in that line item, which was the amount that was under the council line item. There were no dollars appropriated for security, it was only for the events. And in a future topic here tonight is, is for me to discuss with you that, that the expense of those items in past years exceeds the eighty-five. I'm fine that I have eighty-five to work with, but I've got to let you know something, we, we have to make some decisions about what we don't do.
I would encourage us to go back and look at the YouTube video, because I'm the one that made the motion. Because we weren't putting security dollars in there until we had a security plan and we took that line item by motion to zero. But still, still, it begs the question, and Pete, this is probably a question for you. Or, or the mayor, could we have stopped this event from happening? Because you had no money to pay for it? That's a question for you, sir.
You can stop anything.
Why didn't we stop this event because you had no money to pay for it?
Because in my conversation with the appropriate people, we would find a way to cover that cost for the community.
And can you tell me who the appropriate people are?
Staff.
Staff doesn't set the budget. Okay, well, I would move that we sit, we indefinitely suspend this and let the mayor figure out how he's going to pay for it.
I just, can I interject? I, I just want to understand, so staff is going to be left to find the money to pay for this? I mean, why would that all staff?
No, we got, no, we got plenty of none.
And how could they do that?
No problem, so when this was planned, don't, don't think that I just come up and walk up and do an event. There's conversation with staff about these events.
Right.
That's not an event that I personally gained from, that's an event that the community came out to use. So there were plenty of conversations with staff. The event moved on, but if council wishes not to pay for the event because of the things that's been going on, there's been nonprofits that have reached out and said, if you can't pay for something for the community, we'll take care of it. So that's to answer McKendrick's question.
I believe there's a motion on the floor to postpone indefinitely, and I'll second that motion.
Motion made to postpone indefinitely the shred event for the community, first.
But it's, it's the payment of the invoice, the event's taking place.
Yeah, I mean, I think the motion is to postpone this agenda item indefinitely, not, not the shred of it. So you're right, right, okay, just, just clarifying.
And, and, okay, I'll let, I'll keep, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead, I'm going to make sure we, make sure Ms. Durst got that for the official record.
Okay.
All right, so motion made, motion second, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, what staff planned this event?
We'll talk offline, I don't like putting staff on the spot in meetings.
That, that's, that's, but that's half the reason we get here all the time.
That is not half the reason, you do not throw your-
It's more than half the reason we get here all the time.
Well, no, sir, we're going to move on, motion made, motion second, any further discussion?
Yep, I'm in discussion.
All right, finish your discussion.
Who, who do we talk to, online or offline, to get the information? Pete, I think you're going to have to be, my overarching question is, yes, it's sixteen hundred dollars. It easily could have been ten thousand, fifty thousand, depending on what event that, to the mayor's words, the mayor and his staff decided to have, and then bring the bill to council to pay after the fact it's not budgeted. How do we maneuver this?
I think my other concern is the fact that this was a conversation that you had with staff in planning in January. Here we are with the bill in September, we are not and continue to not be inclusive with your objectives and, and planning. We want to be inclusive. This town has asked for us to be inclusive and that is, that is the part that we continually have to have these conversations about. And that is what is ultimately very frustrating.
Thank you.
Planned in January, we didn't approve the final draft of the budget until May. This council worked with the mayor at three or four budget workshops and shred three sixty event was never discussed.
That, 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 I would agree with that, Council McKendrick.
And here we are in September, asking to pay for an event that the mayor knew wasn't budgeted and instructed staff to have anyway. That gives me heartburn, so can we at least try to collect the facts, if they're collectible, before we write blank checks for events that staff wanted to do?
Mr. Mr. Driggers, I have, I have two things that I want to add. Number one, I would like you to research to determine if we did in fact approve a budget with eighty, with an eighty-five thousand dollar line item for events, because I do not believe we did. And if we did, then I believe that council needs to hold a special call meeting to revisit that line item of the budget, and perhaps it needs to be amended.
Well, that's actually on your agenda for tonight.
It is.
It is. All right. Yep, all right. Roll call vote, Ms. Durst.
Councilwoman Page? The vendor needs to be paid for the services rendered. However, how this came about is not the method in which it needs to go about. And that needs to be reconsidered going forward. I know, thank you. Yes.
Councilwoman Brock?
Yes.
Councilwoman Britt?
So if I may just add, I'm going to concur with Councilwoman Page. It's not that council, I, I couldn't imagine us not wanting to pay the vendor because they came and they did what they were supposed to do in good faith. But the fact that the event was planned with knowing that we did not have the funds to pay them and then in an open session in the public, you know, we're asked to pay for something that was not budgeted, then it gives the perception to some public that council is either being, what do we typically call it? Not working, you know, together, but this was just never brought to us. And so that's just really disheartening, disheartening to me that we are perceived as not working together when we have no idea most of the time as to what's even going on. So to that point, I vote yes.
Councilwoman McKendrick?
Yes.
No, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item C, discussion and approve of town events, Mr. Driggers.
Yes, sir. And so I think we have a pretty natural segue into this discussion.
Mr. Driggers, before you start with this, is there any sort of handout?
No, sir, not at this point, because I actually didn't expect you'll take action on it tonight. So I wanted to have some discussion and, and allow you to give me direction. But it is on the agenda as an action item, in case you desire to take action. So, obviously, I think your first, the question that's going to have to be answered first is, is the matter of whether or not the budget ordinance included eighty-five thousand dollars under town events. It is my belief that it does. The budget worksheets show that, that eighty-five thousand was placed there. It may not have been the intent of council, and I, I fully understand that, it may be the reason that we need to pause. But what was, what we worked with going through the budget workshop settings was, was the proposed budget presented to council by the mayor showed appropriations for each of those events. So I'm going to just get, kind of give you an idea. Movies in the park, the request was made at twenty thousand, and there was a security request at ten thousand. The, the number that was placed for that in the workshop was fifteen thousand, which is the amount that was appropriated in the prior year. There was no adjustment to the amount. The same hold true for the Christmas tree lighting. Request was made at a thousand with fifteen hundred dollars on security. In the workshop appropriation of fifteen hundred dollars for that line item. Red, white, blue event request was for forty-five thousand dollars for the event, twenty thousand in security. It was previously budgeted at twenty-five thousand dollars, it remained at twenty-five thousand dollars. And then we had Juneteenth, the request was at twenty thousand dollars. The prior year it had been appropriated at twenty-five, so it remained at twenty-five. The Veterans Day event, five thousand five hundred was requested, five thousand five hundred was what it was budgeted in, in the previous year, and it remained as, as that appropriation. Purple Heart, three thousand dollars, five hundred for security was the request. Three thousand dollars was the previous appropriation, it remained at three thousand dollars. Christmas Parade was requested at ten with a five thousand dollar request for security. It was previously budgeted at ten and remained at ten. There were two new events that were requested, the MLK luncheon at five thousand dollars and five hundred dollars for security. No dollars were appropriated for that event. Jazz on the loading dock was requested at five thousand dollars with one thousand dollars for security, and no dollars were appropriated for that. So the events, movies in the park, Christmas tree lighting, red, white, and blue, Juneteenth, Veterans Day, Purple Heart, Christmas Parade, were, were entered into the budget at the prior year levels equalling eighty-five thousand dollars for each of those events. The point that I'm making in this portion of the agenda is that eighty-five thousand dollars is not sufficient based on prior year expenditures for these same events. I know that it was council's intent to have more discussion about these events as we move forward, but we are in September and we are planning for our Christmas events. And so I, I needed to get this to your agenda because I've got to know, is it first come, first served? And we spent eighty-five thousand dollars, whatever was later in the, the year? If we don't do them because we've run out of money, that's fine. Again, that's how I am charged to manage the budget. If eighty-five wasn't intended to be there and it needs to be taken back to zero, council can take that action. If it's your desire to add dollars to do the events that are scheduled, that is an action of council. But all I have is eighty-five thousand dollars under the current budget ordinance to work with and I can't, our staff can't conduct each of those events that are listed for eighty-five thousand dollars. Point in, the point, the biggest, I think the biggest demonstration of that is in our red, white, and blue event. Just the fireworks cost fifteen thousand dollars. And we've, and, and we haven't, we haven't spent twenty-five thousand dollars on that event in a long time. We've overspent each of these line items in the past, and that's fine. But in your ordinance this year, you gave explicit instructions to me that said, these are absolute, and if you need more, you got to come back to council and we'll consider it under the contingency line item. And that's why I have, that has always been my belief, and it's been part of our discussion in the budget workshops, that that does not require a budget amendment. You already have the funds appropriated in this budget. It is a reallocation. I have the authority under your ordinance to shift money in any line item, except contingency. And that was specifically and intentionally written into your budget ordinance. And that was specifically and intentionally written into your budget ordinance so that those items would come back to you and not for me to move those dollars.
So, Mr. Diggers, just looking back at something real quick. That item on the budget was never updated. To Councilman McKendrick's point, when you look at the town events and you see, this the first time we ever had a mayor propose budget and a council propose budget.
That's not correct.
No, I'm talking about in the, how we written it out in the budget. If you look at the budget sheet.
You mean the heading.
Yes, the heading. That's what I'm, yeah. When you look at it, this is the first time we done it. That whole piece was, um, that wasn't allocated. Now, I can't remember if it was McKendrick or Brock that said it wasn't. It was zero in that budget item. But that eighty-five isn't supposed to be there.
All I can say, Mr. Mayor, is you approved it in your budget ordinance. It may, should not have been there, but it was approved in the budget ordinance.
So tonight you're asking us as council to look at that and actually prioritize since we in the Christmas planning phase.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think your issue has, I think your issue is bigger.
Bigger.
Than what, what, what we've addressed here this evening, uh, based on the questions and comments that, that I've heard. Uh, but, but yes, I, I, I'm working off of a budget that has an appropriation of eighty-five thousand. If council believes that that should not be the case, council will need to take action to remove that eighty-five thousand. Fine with that. But I can't, I cannot allow staff to continue to plan events that there are no appropriated funds for.
I'm with, I don't disagree with what you're saying. But we have an interim administrator that says he cannot allow staff to continue to plan events that are not appropriated for. And we have a mayor that says, me and my staff decided to have an event that costs the town sixteen hundred dollars. And what is in the middle of those two is council.
It's a very rusty double edged sword.
And, 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 but council gets cut with the sword. The mayor gets to be the hero and you get to be red in the face. This council is the financial decision makers of the town. So that would beg the question, what other events are planned by the mayor and his staff that council does not know about and the interim administrator doesn't know about? Are there other events that we don't know about? Are we gonna be here in three months paying another two thousand for another event?
Sir, all I can tell you is that I have no knowledge of other events that are not on that list.
Mr. Mayor, are there other events that you planned in January, February, Mar- I don't care when you planned them, that we don't know about?
So let me. So let me address something. Never mind. There are no events.
Other than the one we're discussing tonight.
You got the topic. Well, we already discussed that one and finished with that. Um, that will be covered. So there's no need to beat that one down.
Well, the only reason I'm asking that, Mr. Mayor, is if we can establish there are no other events, we can pay a vendor that did what you asked them to do and not hold them hostage in this process. That's my, that's my point.
Well, you're not holding anyone hostage. You already, you, we just voted on that. I just told you, if it's not covered, there's organizations in town that have stepped up to cover that for the good of the community. So we're, we're covered on that. But where we at right now, let's stay on topic. Where we at right now?
You're trying to make us out to be the bad guys.
I'm not making you out to be any, I'm not making you out to be anything, sir. I haven't put up an argument. It's a community event. We, we, where we at right now is where Mr. Diggers at so that staff can know where they need to be. We got the discrepancy on numbers. They gotta figure that out first and then get to where we at. Yes, sir.
I, I just want to be clear. In your previous action, you voted to table that request to pay that bill.
It's not being paid.
That bill is not being paid.
That's my point.
No.
If we can, but it doesn't matter what we say. It doesn't matter that we've made it crystal clear that we curtailed the budget so that we would force communication because communication doesn't happen. An event happens that you don't know about till you get back. And then we get presented by you a sixteen hundred dollar bill to pay in the rears for something that's already happened. And we hear the mayor say, there's no other events. I frankly don't trust that there's no other events, but you're not the gatekeeper. You're not the gatekeeper. You're just an innocent bystander who we call the interim administrator. Otherwise, I would move to pay the vendor in good faith because shred three sixty did what they said they were gonna do. Can't make sense of it.
I'm, I'm gonna go to your attorney and say, if that is your desire, then you need to make a motion to reconsider.
Correct.
And go back to that item because you've taken action on that item.
We could do that at, at a later notice if we need to, as long as it's in the same meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, so we don't have to do that right now. We can do it thirty minutes from now.
Absolutely.
All right. So, yeah, I understand that. Um, Mr. Diggers, looking at this list, would you say that it's fair to place the following items as the events that will take place prior to the end of the calendar year? Christmas Tree Lighting.
Yes, sir.
Christmas Parade.
Yes, sir.
Veterans Day.
Yes, sir.
I, I wanna say Purple Heart.
I'm, I'm not sure when that.
We already had Purple Heart.
Did that happen in this fiscal year though?
Yes.
How did that happen if there wasn't any money appropriated for it? Well, you say there was. Okay, you say there was. Let's, we'll, we'll move past that. Okay. So I, I thought Purple Heart was a yes, but it's, yeah. Okay, then, have there been any security plans submitted on behalf of the events that are scheduled to take place before the end of the calendar year? I'm not so much worried about Christmas Tree Lighting or Veterans Day, of which there are none, no dollars allocated. It's more the Christmas Parade. Has there been a security plan submitted for that event?
Not that I have been involved in.
Okay. I think that's the biggest rub I have is that the holdup is that there are dollars allocated or requested for security and yet there is no plan. So how can you ask council to write a blank check but not know what we're getting? I mean, are we getting one deputy? If you look at the Christmas Parade, it's a ten thousand dollar event with a five thousand dollar security. So you're at fifteen thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollar request. But what does that five thousand dollars of security buy? I, I don't know. We could probably look at last year's and determine that, but the fact is it hasn't been presented to council, so we don't know what we're buying. So I would ask, and I think this makes a, a fair amount of common sense, to bring forth security plans for these various events. If you're gonna ask for twenty thousand dollars in security, Mr. Mayor, for Rockin', Red, White and Blue, what does that twenty thousand dollars get us? If it's fifty deputies, I'm, I'm sorry, that's, that's just, you gotta do better than fifty deputies. That, that's not a plan. That's a number of, of uniformed officers. So you're asking for almost forty thousand dollars in security, uh, for the, for the events and you can't tell me what it's for. So I'm of the opinion that until you can tell me what it's for, that we approve fifteen hundred dollars for tree lighting. Purple Heart's already happened. Tell me what that is. That's already been spent, so that doesn't have to be approved. And fifty-five hundred for Veterans Day. And I'll take everything else down to zero until I see a plan. Not, we're gonna hire fifty Richland County deputies to show up and try to manage a crowd of ten thousand plus, which I can tell you, this park cannot handle. It's not possible from someone who manages events that exceed ten thousand park people. So that would be my motion is to approve, is to, what is it? Let's see. Eighty-five K. Fifty-five hundred, fifteen hundred, that's seven thousand. To lower, well, does anybody know how much we spent on Purple Heart? Can anybody tell me that? Because I can't take that away. All right. So the, the amount approved was three grand. You came in under three grand? All right. All right. So that would be ten thousand dollars, which would be Christmas Tree Lighting of fifteen hundred, fifty-five hundred for Veterans Day and three thousand dollars for Purple Heart. No, yep, Purple Heart. So I would actually move to reduce the amount in line item twenty-three, fifty-one, ten, three seventy-three to ten thousand dollars effective immediately. And then come back with a plan and I'm happy to approve events. But you, you, again, no one's ever won a war just throwing troops at the front lines. And that's what, that's what, that's what this, that's what this appropriation does. It's just we're gonna throw money at a problem that we don't even understand. And I'm not comfortable spending, uh, a hundred and forty-two thousand additional dollars when we don't have a plan.
Mayor Protim Brock or, or Mr. Mayor, so if we were to approve the Christmas lighting and the parade, was that the only two? The Christmas and the parade, the security?
No, I did not, I, no. I did Purple Heart, Veterans and the tree lighting. Parade needs security, need, need a plan.
Yeah, Christmas and Veterans. So there was no security included for the Christmas tree lighting because that would be outdoors and the Veterans Day, no security, um, included with those two asked?
The Christmas tree, I think, has five hundred dollars for security.
So right now, the security plan is just the sheriff's deputies. Because I know that we had discussed fencing and this and that and the other. It's like, maybe I'm saying the same thing that Mayor Protim Brock is saying. I think that if we just knew what direction we were gonna go in, because that was the whole reason why we postponed the events, because we did not have a security plan. And, you know, these events are coming back around and we still don't have a security plan. And, you know, I know that the residents are chomping at the bits for us to bring these events back, but it looks like right now the only security plan is just the sheriff's department. So does that, so when you approve the Christmas tree lighting, the Veterans Day, Purple Heart is already gone, that includes deputies?
According to the schedule that I'm viewing, Christmas Tree Lighting shows a thousand dollars for the event, which is probably a little high. Five hundred dollars for security, a total of fifteen hundred. Veterans Day shows fifty-five hundred dollars for the event, a zero dollar allocation for security, a total of fifty-five hundred. That's seven. Purple Heart chose a three thousand dollar appropriation for the event, five hundred for security, but three thousand was approved and according to Jordan, we did come in under budget. So we'll just leave that one at a flat three. That's where I get my ten. If the grand total according to Mr. Diggers' math is one fifty-two and we're, and we've already spent three, we got seven more, we take it down by one forty-two. Or actually seventy-five because we have eighty-five approved. And I, I just, I just have to emphasize that we've had two events this calendar year, two movies in the park where there have been multiple fights. Last year's Rockin', Red, White and Blue was red, rockin' and crazy or something. I don't know. It just, it was, it was out of control. Until we have a plan, I, I, I'm not comfortable spending an additional seventy-five thousand dollars or an additional a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars or whatever the number is. We gotta come up with a plan. And if it's fencing, permanent staff that patrol the events, patrol the park, something. But something's gotta give. It can't just be, we're gonna throw thirty-seven thousand dollars at this problem and hope it goes away.
So what's your motion?
My motion was to reduce line item twenty-three, fifty-one, ten, three seventy-three by seventy-five thousand dollars, leaving an approved amount of ten thousand dollars, which will cover Purple Heart, already happened. Purple Heart at three, Christmas Tree Lighting at fifteen hundred and Veterans Day at fifty-five hundred because those are the three pressing events that will occur before the end of the calendar year. Is that correct, Mr. Diggers?
Yes, sir.
Well, and, and the Christmas Parade, but again, there's time. You just gotta come back with a plan. And again, if that plan is we replicate what we did the prior year, well, I just wanna see it.
All right, motion made.
I, I would say, I, I understand where, but I do think we, we're, we've needed to enter into some contracts on the Christmas Parade.
But, but you got the Christmas Parade. You want more money than that?
No, no.
Yeah, not in this motion.
It was excluded.
What's the, of Veterans Day?
Right.
I would add the Christmas Parade.
Okay, how much?
We, we're, ten thousand.
How much we spent last year? Do we know?
Do you recall?
I'm sorry, Jordan, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I can give it, I can give it to you.
Can, can someone deliver in our inbox tomorrow before noon the actual cost of the Christmas Parade for last year to the.
I can give it to you tonight if you'll give me just one more.
All right.
So the, the Christmas Parade in twenty-four, twenty-five, um, our expenditures were four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
That was Christmas tree?
Christmas Parade.
Oh, why are we budgeting fifteen if we only spent four?
Well, we budgeted ten because that's what it was budgeted at last year. And I'm, I'm looking at the expenses from last year of four thousand one twenty-seven. That's, I think there might be something, because in the notes to the spreadsheet, it says that the current budget is fifteen hundred dollars. That is for the tree lighting. Not the.
Parade.
Not the parade. May I have a moment?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's, um, let's take a recess. Five minute recess.
Pete, question, do I have to withdraw my motion or can I just leave it on the floor in motion for a recess? All right. I'll make a motion for a five minute recess.
Second made in the discussion here in a five minute recess.
We're in a five minute recess. We're in a five-minute recess.
And you don't have to talk to me, but you have given us anything, well, look, I'd sit right here. Okay, then I'll just, and that's why you're in the position you're in, you're the mayor, okay, alright.
So, well, it means, well, final action by town council is the second reading.
Oh, so it has to go to two readings?
It's gotta go to two readings.
So even if they voted down tonight, it would go to the second reading?
No, if, if they voted down tonight, it's done.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, yeah, if they voted down tonight, it's, it's, um, it's, it's dead.
Okay, so it has to be written up for a moment?
If you withdraw it, it's not subject to, 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 yeah. So, it means up to y'all, if y'all wanna withdraw whatever.
No, I don't.
Or, or when it comes up, you can just say, I mean, maybe you can get up and say, you know what, we don't want y'all to deal with it tonight. Or, can somebody make a motion to postpone it indefinitely? And, and I would imagine they respect your wishes on that, y'all are the ones.
Yeah, I don't know any of them. I appreciate you helping me.
He's the mayor. Okay, okay, so, then that, okay, so. Okay. Wait two hours.
She, she, Barbara, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still, just a minute, give me just a couple of moments, give me just a couple of moments. So, um. But anyway, they're not gonna discuss on that. The last clarification, they, I, I, for more than, for a connection.
Yeah, so. We paid, I don't think we paid, I don't think we paid for the sound system, and that's what. No, we, we paid for the sound system.
Ish.
Try to do this proper, Pete, I'll look for a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
Second in discussion here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to rescind my motion. And I would like to make a motion to reconsider item B.
Second.
Alright, on item B, we'll, motion being made to reconsider item B, which was discussion and approval of shred event. Motion made and second in the discussion. Here, no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, and Pete, correct me if this isn't proper. I would like to combine items B and C, since they are both town events. So that B will be considered in the appropriation for town events. Is that proper?
I, I think that's fine, I mean, I don't, since they're both right there as action items, I think that's fine as far as the motion.
Yep, so my motion is to combine items B and C into just one, one item. You can label it B and then reorder the others for the official record. We don't have to do that tonight, but.
Second.
Any discussion, I have a discussion. For the town events and as discussed, discussed, um, during the break. After we make this, staff will send out an email, um, to you all so that we can do a workshop, so that we can go back through that budget piece, um, of the agenda item. Mr. Driggers, can we get that to them tomorrow with some, just, to shop some dates?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's, let's try to do that as soon as possible so we can hammer out, and that's the only item, respectfully, I ask, so that we can all focus on that. My other request on that, Mayor Pro Tim, reach out to me by email and let me know the specifics of what you're looking for, so that I can get the proper people from the sheriff's department to discuss exactly what you're looking for, outside of what the staff has normally been giving, um, during those events. Any further discussion?
Uh, just some clarification, Mr. Mayor, if I may. And can you give us these numbers?
So the motion is to just combine B and C, but is there any other detail to?
There'll be a follow-up motion after that. I just wanna combine this.
Right now, we're just combining.
Yeah, so. Alright.
And we can.
In discussion on.
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Alright, here, no further discussion with combining items B and C, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it. They are combined.
Okay, Mr. Driggers, do you have the total expenditures from the twenty-four, twenty-five Christmas parade?
Yes, sir. The Christmas parade, uh, last year, we spent five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifty-one fifty.
Fifty-one fifty. Twenty-five, fifty-one fifty.
And we had how much appropriated for it, ten, ten thousand? The last, last fiscal year, I believe that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ten thousand.
Okay.
And that does not include any security, that is just the cost of the event.
Okay, what, what, what did we spend on security? Or, or did that include security last year? What did we spend that fifty-one fifty on?
Well, ads were seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, golf carts were six hun, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, stages at a P A system was one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. An application extension ad was three hundred dollars, staff drinks, thirty dollars, candy canes, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, staff food, two oh five, porta potties, uh, washing station, one thousand dollars, sponsorship plaques, one hundred and ninety-four dollars, uh, float entries sponsorships, we had an income of eight hundred dollars, giving us a cost of four thousand one twenty-seven seventy-three. And then we had additional expansion, expenses of banners for six hundred and eighty-five dollars, uh, visibility vests, two hundred and fifteen dollars, clips and batteries, fifty dollars, megaphone, ninety-two dollars and eighty cents. And, and we, I guess we returned it, I don't remember, okay. Apparently we returned it and got a thirty-two dollar, thirty-eight cent credit. So, four thousand one twenty-seven seventy-three, additional expenses of one thousand, ten dollars and twenty-seven. I think that comes close to fifty-one fifty.
And no security in there?
And no security. That was paid for out of the event budget line item. I do not know if it was paid for out of another line item. I, I, I just don't know. I wasn't here, I don't know. I can find, I can find out, I just don't know.
Um, I had Jennifer print me all of the events and I went line by line. And I don't recall seeing anything that said, "paid security." But I do know we paid for security. Um, I think we had maybe twelve deputies last year and it took you five an hour. Um, I think the earliest they were there was maybe eleven-thirty or twelve until probably five, I would guess. So, that just kinda gets you in it.
Five hours times twelve people times fifty-five dollars.
How many hours?
About sixty times five.
Sixty million hours.
About thirty-three hundred dollars, ballpark, yep.
So, let's leave that at ten.
Ten should pay for the event plus the security.
Now, question, question, Mr. Driggers.
Yes, sir.
The fifty-one fifty and thirty-three hundred is approximately eighty-five hundred dollars. I think it's eighty-four fifty, but let's just make it very easy to say eighty-five.
Okay.
So it appropriated ten grand last year, you spent eighty-five, you got fifteen hundred surplus. Does the current budget ordinance allow that fifteen hundred dollars to be reallocated to other events with, that would fall into that line item?
Absolutely, because the budget ordinance only says town events. It doesn't break them out in the ordinance, only in the workshops, where it was broken out.
Okay. Alright.
And it's not an unusual budgeting process, that if you're doing multiple events and you've got eighty-five thousand or a hundred thousand, one comes in a little under, one goes over a little bit, it, I mean, that is traditionally what happens. At the end of the year, maybe you come a couple of thousand dollars under budget, maybe you go a couple of thousand dollars over budget. But what you shouldn't be doing is going fifteen thousand dollars over budget, because, you know, that, that's, should be coming back and saying, hey, you know, we didn't expect that. The, the, the numbers on your, and you're not doing that tonight, I understand, but your numbers on your red, white and blue are the ones that are, that, they were higher than I even mentioned to you a little while ago.
And did you have the numbers for the tree lighting last?
Yeah, tree, tree lighting, um, we actually spent last year three thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars, but that included a, uh, entertainment, we had a band that was there. And so, um, Jordan, who works with this, recommended that if we do not do that, we could probably do that event for two thousand dollars. But if we, but if we did the band, about four thousand.
For the tree lighting? It was the.
It was the praise and worship team from Village?
Church worship came in.
I thought it added a lot.
For their, the sound system, we set upon hand. So that's what the, about two thousand, actually, was it?
Mr. Driggers and Ms. Jordan, if you don't mind, um, the allocation or rather appropriation to Veterans Day, that's held at the Historical Society, correct?
Yes, so that's the H tax, eighty percent that we give them, that you report all of that.
Um, this is not H tax, this is general fund dollars.
The, under town events?
Yeah, that would not be H tax.
I'm pretty sure it's under.
Yeah, you, you do a transfer. You do a transfer from hospitality over to a portion of your town events, uh, that's designated out of your hospitality. It was the phone call that you and I had last week, trying to figure out where...
Why, why don't we just list it under hospitality?
I don't know why you do it the way you do it.
Good answer, neither, apparently neither do we. Jordan, the amount that's for that event, is that just a check that's written to the Historical Society, for the, for the amount that's appropriated?
Eighty percent, and then after, I get to report the other twenty percent.
Okay, so, so we, we just simply write a check, and they submit the expenses, then we pay, so if it comes under, we don't pay the full amount?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think historically you have, and there was, I can't remember what it was, but there was something that went under H tax last year, that, um, Daniel decided to do under, so, again, that's where those gray areas were, you know, it was pretty much what Daniel signed off on, and there was something, it might have been Veterans Day that went under, but yes, I, I would say that we should be writing what they spent on it.
Okay.
But in this budget year, they requested five thousand five hundred.
But it's under town events, and yet we reimburse ourselves out of H tax.
And we transfer H tax into...
Which we could just pay that straight out of H tax and save ourselves that ridiculous thing.
There are, there are transfers to cover those that qualify under the H tax.
Okay, that, would, they should just be under H tax and be, and be done with it.
Your thirty-four fifty-three for tree lighting?
Yes.
Any security in there?
No.
I do not think we have security, I think it's a five hundred dollars, maybe, um, for last year, it's one of my first...
Okay, okay.
I don't know if we did or not, maybe we didn't really...
No, ma'am, we haven't, no, that was just my budget proposal, proposing five hundred for security.
So in that case, maybe forty-five hundred, depending on if you do the concert or not.
How many people attended the concert last year, that just seems awfully expensive? Are we generating revenue, is there, is there some sort of trade-off?
Food trucks, okay, we did charge food trucks to come out, obviously, you know, didn't necessarily make up for the concert, but, um, you know, we had more people come out to the tree lighting than ever before, according to papers, so, um, we had a good number of people migrate from there over the concert.
I, I went to both, and I would say, conservatively, twenty-five percent of the people at the tree lighting went to the concert, and it was possibly more than that, I mean...
So how many people do you think went to the tree lighting, what's your base number? Five hundred?
Oh, it was more than that.
Six hundred, eight hundred, it wasn't a thousand?
Eight hundred people.
Alright, so two, so two hundred people went to a concert then?
Yeah.
If you use the Franklin math, which he liked to do, that's fifteen dollars a person, that seems a little... Little on the high end, in my opinion. Alright, I would like to make a motion to, let me get my thing out, reduce the amount appropriated for events by seventy thousand four hundred dollars. The remaining approved events would be as follows, Purple Heart for three thousand dollars. Alright, Purple Heart for three thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars for the Christmas tree lighting, eighty-five hundred dollars for the parade, and sixteen hundred dollars for the shred event. That should total fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. Hold on, I'm not done. I would also move that a fifty-five hundred dollar appropriation be made in hospitality for the Veterans Day, and I would like to revisit at some point, our hospitality appropriations, to see if some of these events would qualify, which I know some of them do, very specifically, rocking red, white, and blue, and probably the Christmas parade, too, tripped the old one, but we can just leave that under town events. So that's my motion for right now.
May I ask you to repeat the amounts for each?
Yes, three thousand dollars for Purple Heart, fifteen hundred dollars for Christmas tree lighting, eight thousand five hundred dollars for the parade, one thousand six hundred dollars for shred day, shred three sixty event. The grand total of that, if my math is correct, is fourteen thousand six hundred, if you deduct that from eighty-five thousand, that would be a reduction of seventy thousand four hundred, to be revisited at a workshop. Alright.
And I would need, I need the motion to say where the dollars go. To contingency?
To contingency.
Yes, go to, yes, and, and, and the, and the, the surplus be moved to contingency.
And then, was part of that motion to appropriate funds from hospitality tax?
Correct, and add a fifty, and add a fifty-five hundred dollar line item, under hospitality, for the Veterans Day event, with Blackwood Museum and Historical Society.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, motion made and second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just two points of clarification. Jordan, with what we're doing so far, does that encapsulate everything you have spent money on thus far, in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, as far as events go?
For instance?
E- even future, I, I just don't want you to be caught spending money on an event that we haven't discussed.
I asked that question, we have not entered in any contracts or cost for events in twenty twenty-six.
Beyond, beyond the Christmas parade?
Correct.
Or, okay, okay, and then secondly, my, my question, this is just a clarification question to the town attorney, we are going to add the shred three sixty event to this and pay it. What options does this council have to keep this from happening again, to keep the mayor from going outside the budget and committing us to spend money?
Uh, not many options, Councilwoman McHenry, um, as you know, this council has already engaged in one lawsuit against the mayor, I am reading from the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five Attorney General Opinion, uh, that, that the town obtained, one quote in there, it says, "The mayor is prohibited from expending funds not appropriated by the council," and that is temp, that statement is tempered, uh, by the, uh, principle that the council may not reduce the budget in such a way that frustrates the mayor's ability to perform his statutory duties, but that is your limited option, I think, is to pursue an action for injunction when something like this happens, or if funds have already been expended, to pursue an action to recoup those funds as part of, as part of an injunction. But as I understand it, I mean, the funds are being allocated now, they have not already been, been spent, um, but I think options are some, somewhat limited.
Even once allocated, could we then take action if it happened again, against this sixteen hundred dollars?
Uh, I, I'm sorry.
It, it, let's say in two months, we have another invoice that is like shred three sixty, can we go back and say shred three sixty was involved with this, and then a future invoice, we're going to put the two together and we're going to seek?
Uh, yes, possibly, possibly.
I'm good, that's, that's good, I'm good, thank you, sir.
It depends, but yes.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor, Ms. Durst, you have all that, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, thank you, and, and discussion real quick, Mayor Protem, please send the email, so that we make sure we have that right, just to make sure numbers and everything right, alright, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, ayes have it, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item D, request for the voter registration for polling place partnership, Ms. Dur- Driggers.
Yes, sir, um, you'll see in your, uh, package, a, a request from, uh, the Director of the Voter Registration and Elections Office, uh, asking to use this facility, uh, as one of their permanent voting precincts, um, moving forward, and so, uh, obviously, that type of request would, would, would need to come to council for consideration. Again, I will say, it's not unusual, I've been in several places, that rec centers and public facilities have been used, um, and so it's not an unusual request, but it's a matter of whether we would like to be able to reserve, you know, dedicate that space and reserve it solely for, uh, those elections, so...
Alright, thank you, sir.
At council's discretion.
Yes, sir, thank you, any questions for the administrator?
Mr. Driggers, I have a question, um, how much were we billed for the change in form of government election?
I don't know the exact number, but it was about fourteen thousand.
Okay. Did the Richard County Elections Commission offer to compensate us?
They did not.
For the use of our space?
They did not.
Will we save any money moving forward, on election expenses, by letting them use our space?
I think it's an appropriate question to ask.
I yield any remaining time.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Questions, comments? I'll be looking for a motion to approve the voter registration request to use Doco Manor as a polling location. You're not frustrating me.
So this is moving, so this is moving forward, here on out, they're going to use this, this facility every election cycle?
Till twenty twenty-six, I think.
Yeah, it's not for this November election.
Okay. So if, if, if that is the case, then they'll have, um, so there'll be two election locations here in Blackwood, this being the second?
I think this would be the third.
Third, because...
Permanent. The rec center, the high school, and here, here.
Bethel-Hembury before, too.
That's what I was thinking.
I don't think Bethel-Hembury is a permanent site.
It's not a permanent.
Well, the high school was mentioned.
They used a gymnasium.
Is there any, I mean, before we consider it, is there wear and tear, is there anything that we need to consider, as far as, you know, the impact on the actual building itself?
Well, of course, it's no different than anybody else using it, we, we normally charge a fee, unless it's given away.
Well, I don't know if that's, I don't know if other people will charge, do other people charge the Elections Commission to use their, their facilities, like the schools? Do we know that?
I don't know that for here, but in my experience in other locations, schools, churches are typically gratis.
Right.
Mr. Driggers, what spurred this request? Just, it just randomly showed up?
It randomly showed up, there was no communication prior to it.
Nobody reached out to them?
I received it by email, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, any further dis, any, any further discussion or comment? Be looking for a motion.
I make the motion to approve this venue as a polling place.
Thank you, ma'am, motion made to approve, Councilwoman Page, looking for a second. Hearing no second, it dies for him, the lack of a, a second, thank you. Next, next item on the agenda is the first reading, action item, discussion and approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five point zero zero six, amending the business license ordinance of the Town of Blackwood to update the class schedule as required by Act one seventy-six of twenty twenty, Mr. Driggers.
I'm glad to provide additional information, but I'm going to ask Ms. Durst, who works very closely, uh, with the Municipal Association and administers, our business license program, if she could provide some background on this.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Durst.
I'm here for the Municipal Association, about page and age, so I'm just imagining about what they're going to be doing, practice, so that's what we do, I'm here to be, not that's the case. Further clarify, they did review this at the Municipalities Association Conference over the summer as well.
Thank you, ma'am, any questions for Ms. Durst?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made, looking for a second.
Second.
Second made, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you, first reading is approved, five oh. Next item on the agenda is item F, first reading, action item, discussion and, and approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five point zero zero seven, amending zoning map, amendment twenty twenty-five dash zero four dash MA, Town Center TC, or two, limited industrial district LI, this amendment would rezone property location, located at eight hundred, in the eight hundred block of Community Road.
Mayor, if I may, offer some additional information, uh, you'll notice that in the agenda, it is correctly stated that this would be limited industrial, um, if you, you'll notice in the actual ordinance, that is identified as LI two, uh, we require, that is a Scribner's error, and we would request that you amend that at first reading to L one, that is in line with what the planning commission has sent to you, it is in line with, uh, what we have listed on the agenda as well, again, it's a Scribner's error, um, and, um, we've asked that you would amend that to LI, rather than LI two.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, you heard the presentation earlier, uh, from you all, do you have any additional questions before we look for a motion? The representatives are still here, if you have further questions?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to make sure that I am clear in seeing, okay, I see the, the view from I seventy-seven, I, I just want to make sure, I might be slow on this, and then I, and then I see the, so, help me, so I am on Blackwood Road, looking, uh, let's say I'm standing at food line or something, and I'm looking across the street, what am I seeing, am I seeing?
You're going to be seeing basically trees. Because, because we're going to be at the south end of that property, where it's, it's currently wooded, so, and we're going to be at the south end of that, so if you're pulling out a cobblestone or a food line, it's going to be virtually not seen, uh, you might see a little bit of a root line.
What's that?
That'd be back here, so you're looking at from food line, what you're saying, you're right here, looking, and you look across the street, you're going to see trees, it's going to be built back here. You following me?
Does that guarantee?
That, that is what the plan is, yes, so, basically, so there, there would be your food line right here, so, this is what you would be seeing, and there's currently a tree line.
That's the tree line right there.
So this, okay, this is real, so this is, I'll be here, okay?
This is where they want them to be built.
This is where they want them to be built. A little building.
So, the entrance to get in it would be Community Road.
Would be off of Community, yes.
You've already received curb cut approvals from DOT?
No, we have not. That would be a part of the, we're doing simple.
And you, and you want the rezoning request done prior to the subdivision of the lot?
We spoke with the Planning Commission.
That's, I'm not concerned about your conversation with the Planning Commission. I'm asking you, you want the rezoning done prior to the subdivision of the lot?
Steve?
Am I allowed to speak?
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
So, yes, we want to get approval first before we subdivide the property. We actually...
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Can I finish my statement, please?
Yes, sir.
So, we actually, when we met with the Planning Department, they actually put that in the Planning Department that if we were approved, we would subdivide it. I've already got board approval to subdivide it if we were approved. But I don't want to subdivide it, spend the money subdividing it for you to just tell me no. I can't build here. I'd rather keep it together.
From the Planning Commission, they approved rezoning the entirety?
No, no. We have a clause...
It's continued. Came from the Planning Commission as well.
There's a clause in there. They said they would put it in there because we agreed on it at that meeting that we would build our portion and we would sell the front portion off. That was agreed upon then in the planning meeting with the Planning Department. That was their big sticking point. Since, can I go back and answer maybe your question a little bit better? I can't answer what you're going to say because I'm going to sell that property. So, it'll be up to you and someone else to determine what you see at that point.
And I'm part of the commission.
I'm William Jason Harden. I'm the VP for U-Haul Company.
And Kevin?
Kevin is no longer with the organization.
And what position was he in?
He was the marketing company president.
I think my comments would stem from four, four of the current council members serving on the planning.
Okay.
I think all four of us heard at the Planning Commission level, U-Haul. I think you pitched to every planning commission that contained four of the council members before you out. Ms. Britt is the only withstanding one.
Okay.
I've done my research.
But when I was on the Planning Commission, I specifically asked the question.
Would you subdivide it?
U-Haul might, no, yes. When you subdivide, his answer was no. U-Haul doesn't sell property. We only acquire some. What change?
Um, that is still ninety-nine percent a true statement. We generally only acquire property. But we want to be in here. We own the eighteen acres. We're still trying to be good neighbors, trying to come into the community. And the reality was, I can build it on less. I can build it on, and it's hard to say, I think we agreed on like ten. And the only reason it's hard to say that is, I don't know how much retention I'm going to need or anything. So, I'm going to use the smallest footprint I can so I can sell the rest off.
And then, two of us were involved with the comprehensive plan rewrite.
Okay.
That would be Councilwoman Page and myself. And there was specific reasoning behind making that, leaving that partial Town Center, especially with the scout announcement. Some four thousand people a day are going to come on off the scout site. And they're going to be looking for services and support for their personal life.
Granted, you call that a part of it.
But from a town of Blackwood perspective, where we don't have a millage on our citizens, they don't pay any property tax per se to live in the town of Blackwood. So, you've heard us tonight talk about hospitality tax, H tax, H tax. That's where Blackwood earns money. We do earn some from business losses, but the majority of the money we have discussed tonight comes from H tax, H taxes. Well, in my opinion, Blackwood would be better served if you sold all eighteen acres and went outside of town and built a three-story storage place and allowed retail development. When we get paid for every dollar spent through our H tax, we don't. We get a business license from U-Haul. So, if you're willing to sell some of it, I would encourage you to sell all of it. Go buy a piece of property outside of the town limits and build a three-story storage place. It's a conflict to put you right in the middle of Town Center, which is our strictest land use code.
Okay. So, outside of that, what other concerns do y'all have about us being here?
I mean, we now, I mean, we now, U-Haul deal very small in Blackwood, and they stay extremely busy. I don't have anything against U-Haul.
Okay.
My point is, we have to be very, very careful. What you're asking us to do is downzone. You're asking us to take a piece of property that we have made a crown jewel in the town of Blackwood and downzone it, at least part of it, to allow you to put a three-story self-storage, very similar to public storage, which would be your name.
Well, they have storage, yes. I agree with that. We are not the same product. So, um, I have a question. Is there any way that I can table this or continue this? Yeah, I'm not...
It's up to the will of the council to table or further, to allow you to have further discussion and research.
Well, let me, let me just say what the ordinance does provide. The ordinance does provide that an amendment, a request for a rezoning may be withdrawn in writing by the initiator at any time prior to final action by Town Council. So, it can be withdrawn in writing tonight.
Piece of paper back there?
Yeah, or council can...
I don't think they want it withdrawn. I think they want it, they want it postponed. They don't want it drawn.
They just want it postponed.
Right.
Yeah.
It's got to go back to Planning Commission, yes.
Yeah, I just want to table it.
Well, that's up to council.
Yeah, that's what I said. That's up to council on that piece.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2025 dot zero zero seven.
I'm sorry?
Motion been made. And second, Councilwoman, fruit.
Can I ask if, I didn't, if it were tabled, what would you be doing? Why would you need us to table it?
I mean, I really just need to go, I got to go back and figure out. It doesn't seem like you want us here, based on the gentleman's...
I'm just one member, I'm just one member of council, so...
No, I know. I understand that. And, you know, I, I'll be honest. I don't know. I really need to go process through this. I don't want to sit up here and make threats because it ain't good for us. It ain't good, I don't believe we're going to sell the whole property. I'm trying to find a way to work with the town. You know, like, the first time, we tried to find a way to work with the town. So, I don't know. Maybe I go back and talk to my board and see what they think. I feel like we've been more than fair trying to accommodate giving y'all the front half of the property. I'll be honest, that's generally not what we would have done. We would have wanted to be way up front. And again, I'll be honest, just sitting in here tonight, I mean, y'all have so much internal conflict, it feels like, from sitting on this side, that I don't know if this is the right time for it. Maybe that helps answer your question some. So much so that I spoke with y'all's local council or your council about tabling it earlier when y'all were having those discussions. I don't know if I'm being treated fairly tonight. I don't know.
Sure, you bought a piece of property that the Town Center would buy.
Okay.
And you're telling us we're not treating you fairly because you want to downzone your property. That is, that's a stretch.
Okay. I, I understand where you're coming from, seriously.
If I buy a VW, I can't change that VW to anything that would be done until I sell it.
Yes. I definitely understand where you're coming from. I personally did not buy that property. I inherited that property when I took over. It's now mine to manage, so I do have to manage it. You know, I don't, I don't know what to tell you, to be honest.
All right.
As a, as a point of order...
Yes, sir.
This did, it was approved at the Planning Commission on a six oh vote with the restriction that it was conditioned up to ten acres to be rezoned as LI.
Yes.
So, it was up to, so we could not exceed that. If council takes action contrary to the recommendation of the Planning Commission, you would have to do that on a supermajority vote, which would be four members would have to oppose the rezoning.
I don't think that's true.
That's exactly what we were told at...
Yeah, I didn't try to...
Yes.
The meeting.
Why? It's under the State, it's not Carolina State Planning Act requires that.
Well, wow, if that's true, this council has really messed up in the past.
I don't doubt it.
Can y'all just vote? I'll tell you what, I'll remove my table and it just, or ask them for it, just vote.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Driggers. You were explaining...
I'm just saying that for council to override the Planning Commission requires a supermajority. That's under the South Carolina Planning Act. That is what is required.
What's being overridden? That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, again, they're recommending it. If council denies it, it has to be on a four vote. It can't be anything, it can't be a simple majority. It can't be three-two. It would have to be four-one or five-zero.
I'd have to research that. I, I don't know that off the top of my head. But the motion, yeah, the motion right now is to approve, not deny. But I mean, if the motion to approve is not, does not pass, then it's, then it's dead unless there's, unless a supermajority is needed. But I'd, I'd have to research that. I don't, I don't know.
So, Mr. Driggers, you're saying even to go this route with the motion that's on the floor, just so I understand?
I'm sorry, what, what is the motion?
To, motion to approve.
The motion to approve, okay.
And it's been second.
It would require four negative votes to do that, under the South Carolina Planning Act.
I call the questions.
Exactly what he just said is what we were told at planning, to be clear. Now, again.
I have a question. If we vote on this, and while that's being researched, are you going to have that now, Mr. Pete?
I'm trying, but...
Okay, okay. Because I don't want to have a vote on something, then it will get overturned based on...
I don't want y'all to do that either, that's for sure.
Bottom line, if that's the case, we need to vote this down at least for one or five of them.
Well, you have a motion on the floor and a second to approve unless it's redrawn, withdrawn.
If you vote yes here, Pete, and he's right, which I'm not doubting him.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm really not. I'm just saying you act differently.
I do. I am aware of that.
And this passes by a three-two vote or whatever, then U-Haul has approval to build their site.
Yes.
And for this first reading?
Yes.
First reading.
A three, a three, a three-two vote would move it forward to second reading. To deny it requires four or more votes.
But would kill it.
And it would kill it.
For, for one year, twelve months.
Right.
He could bring it back after twelve months.
All right. We're still waiting on Pete.
Listen, I mean, we might as well take a recess because I'm, yeah, I mean...
Unless, you ready to vote? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, Ms. Durst. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Councilwoman Page? Councilmember Brock?
No.
Councilwoman Britt?
Um, my initial vote was going to be a no vote, just aesthetically. I was not in favor of it. Um, no, no, no.
Councilmember McHenry?
No.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes. Noyes have it.
Am I good? Believe no?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Motion for first reading fails. Next item on the agenda is executive session, perute in the South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy. One item this evening for the public, receipt of legal advice on manners, on matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will be discussing the manner, operations, and incidents. Be looking for a motion to enter executive session. Motion made?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Ayes have it.
Right, right. But I'm still going to, I'm still going to research it.
Looking for a second.
We can reconvene, it's okay, she's coming.
We got to go on. Looking for a second.
I second him.
Sir. All in favor sitting in five by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's have it. All right, counsel, any vote after executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Mr. Mayor, I will, I will move to release the video effective immediately in regards to the incident that occurred on September 11th, 2025, from approximately 3:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m.
Motion made to release the video. Looking for a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second mo- motion made, second. Looking for discussion.
Will this have a negative impact on the... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Will this have a negative impact on any ongoing investigation?
I'll refer to your attorney.
There's really no way to tell. I, I don't know if you're talking about any law enforcement investigation. Yeah, I, I, I don't know how law enforcement would, would view that. I know that law enforcement, when it comes to active investigations, is very protective of the, of pieces of evidence until they get to a point where they've figured out everyone's stories and they've figured out all the, all the facts as they have it. I just know that from, from experience. So whether this, whether the release now before the video is in the hands of an investigator that can review all those, all those statements and, and facts of, of what went on that day, I don't know. May have a negative impact.
Um, uh, may I approach him, Brock? Could it be a case where, if, if the video is turned over, let's say this week, could it be that it's, it's released after law enforcement?
No, it, it's a public video that took place in a public place with public employees. It needs to be released immediately.
I mean, I think it's up to counsel whether it's released or not. I, I just don't know. I mean, certainly, certainly it could have a negative impact.
But it doesn't change what happened though, does it Pete? Does it change what happened?
It doesn't change what's on the video, no.
Okay. My motion stands.
My, my question was, would it have a negative impact on the ongoing investigation? Not just a negative public, what I'm talking about, a negative impact on the investigation.
Counselor, I'm for it. Is there an open and active investigation into this? I believe the answer is no. So there's no negative impact to the investigation because one doesn't exist. Will it spur one? Absolutely. Should it? One thousand percent.
Brock, I would, I would add a friendly amendment if you'll take it.
Let's hear it.
I would also request that the employees involved, and Pete, I can name them.
Not, no, no reason to name them.
That's why I didn't. Have an incident report turned into our town attorney by close of business tomorrow.
I'll accept that. Is that proper?
Um, I don't, I don't see why not. I mean, I think that, I think that motion can be made. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think there's anything improper about the motion, whether, whether it gets done or not, we'll, we'll see, yep.
An incident report from all employees involved in the timestamp of the video, Brock just motioned. just motioned to release, an incident report from everybody be given to the town attorney, from each employee that was involved.
And is it a report from the employees present during the alleged incident?
As part of that motion, I will request that from those employees.
Again, doesn't mean you'll get it.
I will request that.
Okay.
All right, motion made. Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Here, now and Mr.惹go.
Councilwoman Page?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brock?
Yes.
Councilwoman Britt?
If it's not going to have a negative impact on the
No.
Investigation.
Don't know what impact it'll have.
We meet with, well, Ed meets with investigators on Wednesday, not me.
I mean, I guess it's, I, y'all vote yes, because it is what it is. I'll vote yes.
Councilman McHenry?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes. Yes, have it. Four one. Be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.